Hey, it looks like we're now live, so we'll go ahead and get started. Welcome everyone to Planning Commission Meeting. It's Tuesday, October 13th, our first meeting of all, and we'll get started at 7:01 PM. Commissioner Adcock has offered to get us started with a thought or an invocation.
Thank you. Dear Father in heaven, we're thankful for this opportunity to meet as the planning commission. We're grateful for our community that we live in and for the good people that live here. We invoke a special blessing and plead for thy assistance as we deal with this COVID-19 situation that all might be protected and do those things that are necessary to be kept safe. We thank you for all the blessings that we have, especially grateful for thy son and his atoning sacrifice, you know, for this prayer in his name, the name of Jesus Christ.
Thank you. Commissioner Lance has offered to lead us in the pledge.
You stand or you can after me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic and one nation, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Okay, thank you very much. So tonight on the agenda, we've got a light one. There's only two items on the agenda, so I guess first we'll start with the public forum. After that, we've got a public hearing and possible action on a default zone for the planned community zone. And then we've got planning commission business, which includes approval of the minutes from our last meeting on September 22nd. So with that, let's go ahead and open the public forum, which I'll do at 7:02. Did we have any comments submitted or is anyone there who would like to comment during the public forum?
We did not have anybody sign up and we do not have anybody here present.
Okay, then we will close the public forum at 7:02. And we'll move on to agenda item one, which is a discussion and a public hearing on the default zone for the planned communities.
All right, you ready for me?
Yes, please.
All right, so. So on the screen there. Scroll down a little bit. This, this agenda item is a proposed amendment to the Santaquin City Code, specifically the planned community zone. As was mentioned, the last planning commission meeting in reports. It was. It was explained that the planned community zone really only stands if there's a development agreement in place that lays out the land use regulations and provisions for a planned community. That's really what, what. Helps the planned community move forward and help staff know what applies in that particular zone. Something that the city is going to be experiencing here soon is the only planned community in our community, which is Summit Ridge, has a development agreement which is set to expire in December. Now, this, this amendment and this, this agenda item is not meant to discuss the Summit Ridge Development Agreement, you know, particularly. But it's to address more of a broad approach to if we have a planned community zone with a development agreement that expires. Currently in the zone, there is nothing that gives staff the direction to understand if that development agreement expires and goes away, what are the land use regulations that, that. Replace that, that development agreement. So the purpose of this, this proposed amendment is to. Establish a, a underlying or a default zone in the event that a development agreement expires. So. In your packet, you'll see, I basically put the entire planned community zone language in there. And at the very bottom of that zone language, there is a new paragraph that has been created, which hopefully will, will address that point. It's, it's titled default zoning and it reads, "In the event that the agreement which establishes the development plan expires and is not extended or is not reestablished, the land use regulation shall default to regulations contained within the residential R10 zone for those areas that were primarily designated as residential in the development plan. In such cases when the property was just. In such cases when the property was designated commercial in the development plan, the land use regulations sell default to regulations contained within the interchange commercial C1 zone. If it is not clear which zone should apply based on the development plan, the city council shall have the discretion to apply the appropriate default zone." So the intent with this was really to try and take the two most broad, basic, common residential and commercial zones and apply those based on the development plan. Now, development plan is consistent with the language in the planned community zone. That's essentially. Oh, that helps to. Zoom in a little bit, but that essentially is, is, is the, the development plan that is contained within the development agreement that lays out the land use regulations. Which will apply to that, that area. So. So with that said, we felt it was, it was just best to apply the R10 zone and the C1 zone. And it was based on, on the, the kind of master plan, if you will, of that planned community of where commercial and where residential would be. The benefit of having the R10 residential zone is it's the most common zone, but also in the event that, that, you know, there was some development rights in place that allowed them to get a number of units or whatever. The R10 is, does qualify to be a PUD, so it could re-enter into a negotiation with the, with the property owners to then. Establish another development agreement if that was the route that the city so chose to follow. So, you know, interchange commercial is probably our, our most broad, basic commercial zoning. And it'll have the, the most commercial uses listed and, and our other resident, or sorry, excuse me, our other commercial zone would be Main Street Residential. And obviously that is a little bit more specific to, to Main Street. So with that said, that's, that's the language that's before the planning commission and happy to answer any questions that you may have in your discussion.
Okay, thank you for that introduction. So we do need to do a public hearing, so I would suggest we do that now. So I will go ahead and open the public hearing at 7:08. Do we have any comments submitted for the public hearing? Or is there anyone there who would like to address the question?
We do not have any public comments that were submitted for the public hearing. We do not have anybody here in attendance.
Okay, then we will close the public hearing at 7:08 PM. And we'll move on to discussion. It seems pretty straightforward. Commissioners, any thoughts or questions about that?
I like it too. I guess the part where it says if it is not clear which zone should apply based on the development plan, city council should have protection. I guess I'm wondering, should it just default automatically to the council?
Well, and that's a good question. And that's, that's kind of what, what the thought process has been as, as we've, we've reviewed this is, you know, zoning is obviously a legislative action. And in order for a planned community zone to be in place, it has to have that development agreement. If that development agreement goes away, does that just revert back to the council? We feel like there's got to be some sort of an expectation and, and, you know, a default zone that, that property owners can kind of fall back on and have an expectation of what that will be. I think this, this gives, like I say, the R10 residential has that flexibility to where, where it's not like all, all development rights are lost. Interchange commercial is very, you know, broad and, and still provides a number of commercial options in, in the event that commercial property is, is, is not, does not have those specific. Doesn't have that specific development agreement language tied to it anymore. So. Yeah, and, and I apologize. This was something that I wanted to run by our legal counsel. I haven't been able to do that yet. But I think for purposes of the planning commission, I think getting kind of the, the idea and the gist of what you're looking for, I think legal counsel can be pending and obviously will become a factor with the council who ultimately will, will make the decision in this, this legislative action of amending our code. No, the only planned community is Summit Ridge. All those other ones, you know, Foothill and the Orchards, and those are all plant unit developments, PUDs. And so PUDs, they also require a, a development agreement in order to be in place, but they're not nearly as, you know, they have underlying zoning already because it has to be R10, R15, R20. There's, there's only a handful of residential zones that a PUD can be applied to. So, yeah, this is a little bit different. Plant communities are a lot bigger, a lot broader. And you need to have 800 acres in order to qualify for consideration of a PUD. So.
Are there any other areas in town where plant communities have been proposed or where it seems likely that there may be one in the future?
Well, and that's a great question.
Property, which is a very large proposed development. And they don't even have enough acreage to, to qualify for, for. Planned community consideration. Now, that 800 acres for a planned community isn't necessarily set in stone, that always could change. However, what's on the books right now, that would be the closest that there is to qualifying for another planned community. And it's hard for me to, in my opinion, to foresee any other areas within our annexation policy plan that would have that much acreage to even be considered a planned community. So, well, this isn't specific to Summit Ridge. It's, it's a broad planning community zone. You could also look at it as this kind of only applies to Summit Ridge. So. That is, that is a good question. But like I say, the planned community is, is, is kind of a tool and the tool chest that we have for zoning. And if that tool were to be used again, if that was something the city would want to do, then, then something would probably need to change. And it would probably be that acreage requirement that would need to change. Now, that's not to say that it will or will not happen. That's just, you know, kind of. Explaining the, the situation that we're in.
Yeah, I mean, given that we're not going to see one of these on Main Street, you know, I think R10 and C1 makes sense as underlying zones.
And I think that covers us just in case.
I feel like as long as the city council, as long as the city council has, has some teeth in the matter, I feel like then.
And the thing with planted communities zones, there's. It's, it's, it's a. It's an approved development agreement with the intention of seeing a, a, a planned community, a, a very carefully designed community. So I think this zoning would probably be as about as consistent as we could get with, with the development agreement. And either that development agreement will be. Continued, or we'll want to get zoning in place that's going to be consistent with the whole intention of that planned community in terms of where residential and where commercial uses are situated. So that's, that's why I think this, this, this works because it's, it's trying to stay consistent with where. Commercial and residential uses were meant to be. Like I say, if there's, if there's something that seems kind of middle ground, if there's industrial or something else that maybe doesn't apply, then, then that, that's where the council comes in with their legislative authority. But again, rather than just putting it on the council, I think it's, it's good to have something in place for landowners to, to, to expect and to, to not feel like their, their development rights are just going to be completely withdrawn and, and in the hands of, of, of the council.
Yeah, agreed.
Trevor?
Yes.
I have a few comments.
Go ahead.
First of all, I heard you say that a PUD requires 800 acres. Did you mean planned community?
Apologize. Yeah, if I said that wrong, a planned community requires 800 acres, a PUD requires five.
My, my thoughts are this. This is the only planned community zone we have, and it may be the only one we have. So we don't have any history here, but, but what's the processes of. Their development agreement, if it does expire, what's the processes for it to be extended or to be reestablished?
So this specific development agreement has a provision in that talks about that. It had a 20-year sunset on it, and it said that, that the council, the Santaquin City Council, at their discretion, can extend that development agreement up to 10 years. So the, the development agreement will establish those, those parameters for how long the agreement is in effect and whether or not there's an option for an extension.
So at the longest, this, this plan, this. Development agreement would expire 10 years from now if nothing was done. I mean, it couldn't be extended further than that.
Well, correct. It's, it's up to 10 years.
Okay. I'm just trying to get some parameters and this is kind of new territory for all
No, that's a great question.
Thank you. I'm, by the way, I'm in favor of this. I think we need to protect the landowners and also the city as well.
Yeah, agree.
And that's a great point. This, this isn't just for protecting the landowners, but, you know, we, we want to avoid any exposure for the city in terms of a development agreement going away. And then what? This gives a little bit more clarity and a little bit more. Definition so that everybody knows what, what will happen if, if the development agreement expires and isn't extended.
This is legislative, isn't it?
Correct. This is amending, amending the Santaquin City Code, so it's, it's changing law.
Okay, any other questions or concerns? And if not, is anyone prepared to make a motion on a recommendation to the city council?
I'd be happy to make a motion that we positively recommend to the city council that this. This default zone planning 10-7H-23 be adopted.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Can we, can I add something before we vote?
Yes, we can do discussion.
Can we just ask that it be pending review of the city's legal counsel?
That's a good point. So we, we would need Commissioner Adcock to amend his motion.
I would be happy to make that modification.
Okay, do we have a second to the motion as amended?
I will second.
Okay, we have a second. Let's vote. Commissioner Wood, aye. Commissioner Adcock?
Aye.
Commissioner Sperry?
Aye.
Commissioner Lance?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Very good. So. Let's move on to planning commission business. We need to approve the minutes from our last meeting on September 22nd. Is there any discussion needed on those minutes?
I wasn't here.
I wasn't either.
I read that one. Yeah, I thought that looked good.
I thought so too. Okay, so would anyone like to make a motion on those minutes?
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes.
Okay, do you have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Let's vote. Commissioner Lance?
Aye.
Commissioner Sperry?
Aye.
Commissioner Adcock?
Aye.
Commissioner Wood?
Aye.
So those minutes are approved unanimously. Okay. Staff, is there any other business we need to discuss during the meeting?
So I, I was not aware of any planning commissioners that were able to attend the last city council. I thought there was a couple of things that, that were relevant that I would be appropriate to update you on.
So Jason, I actually did. Yeah, I just watched it on YouTube. But I have a few things, but you might have somewhere. It was a great meeting, by the way. Everybody should go back and watch it because I thought it was a really good one. But so, Officer Austin Lerwell was honored as the employee of the month. And you guys probably all saw that cute little Facebook post and what he did. I think he's amazing. So we're lucky to have him in Santaquin. And the fire department also promoted Chad Argyle and Keaton Smith to battalion chiefs. And then three as new captains, Donnie Van Moos, Taylor Sutherland, and Nick Cummings. So that's kind of cool also for Santaquin. And Ms. Santaquin came and talked about her platform and she is darling. Her platform is stand up and celebrate diversity in our community. And I didn't know this before, but instead of her going to or any of the, Ms. Santaquin's going to Miss Utah pageant, they've decided, Santaquin City's decided to use that towards scholarships. And so it's helped her do a lot more for the community and community service projects and stuff that she's been doing. So she's been very involved. Um, let's see. They discussed the construction on 300 West. Because of the feedback from the residents as if it would be more beneficial to leave it as a one-way road or go back to a two-way. That was originally planned. They decided to have a town hall style meeting to get the public input before any decisions are made. Do you know, do we have one set yet?
We don't have a date. We don't have a date set yet, but we plan to do it in more to be as supportive COVID.
Oh, yeah.
Restrictions and whatnot. We're going to have it as an open house where people can come and talk one-on-one throughout a span of time. And we'll, we'll have spots where people can write down their comments. We do recognize that this does have a regional aspect in that it opens up the whole northwest side. And so it's more than just the residents of that road, but we do want to be respectful and listen to the comments from all involved. But that's the intent. And it will probably be sometime in the next, we need to have enough time to notice the meeting, but we also, and invite the public out. But we also know that we're, we're jumping into November and, and we, we don't, because of that, there may be snow. By the time we have the public meeting, come to the city council and then try to market. So we're likely to do it over the winter and then just market in the spring, since there's no parking on roads after November 1st anyway.
Makes sense. Okay, and then the last thing that I had, which Jason had kind of all, he'd mentioned this before we started our meeting, but they decided to change the language in code 10-4-2020. And so no longer says that planning commissioners can only serve two terms. And that is up to the planning commissioner and the mayor if they extend or not at that point. So. Anything else, Jason?
There was the, the Nevo annexation that was, was approved. This is the property that is just west of Santaquin Elementary School. Others, there's some property there on my Nevo School District. There's also the, the 500 West. Parcel or right-of-way that the city owns that's part of that. So that happened as well. And then in Summit Ridge, there's the Vista's West. Phase subdivision, if you will. That, that was granted preliminary approval about three years ago, and they needed to get an extension for a year in order for that to move forward. So there, there, there might be a little bit of a transfer of open space from one of the, the, the plats in the hills in order to, to make the numbers work for them to provide a sufficient open space for, for that phase. So. That was extended with, with that. And I think that, I think you covered most everything else.
Yeah, thank you. Very good summary. Um, okay, of those of us who are here tonight, would anyone be willing and able to attend the next meeting? Which would be on the 20th, right?
I, I am headed to Nebraska or I would volunteer. Sorry, Trevor.
No, that's okay.
Far as I know, far as I know, I would be able to, yes.
Are you interested?
Sure.
Very good. Okay, staff, anything else we need to discuss?
No, I think it's just worth mentioning that, that we've got a new camera system. Hopefully the public is able to hear a little bit better. We have better microphones.
But with that said, what you're looking at right now is the old system. The new system is recording concurrently, but we wanted to make sure this meeting wasn't interrupted and whatnot. So we're, we're broadcasting and streaming with the old. And we're, we're trying this out. We're going to look at the quality of the new, make sure all the cameras are working right, whatnot, and then use that system going forward. So I didn't want to have anyone get confused and look at it and go, it's a new system, but it's still blurry. So.
It is still blurry, but it does sound better.
The microphones are like 10 times.
Yes. And I appreciate Ben jumping in. There's been a lot of technicalities and, and IT work that's been done in this. I, I haven't been involved, but I know they've been working tirelessly to get this system up and running. But, uh, so you'll notice a little bit of a difference. Along with that, the, the city is, is decided to. Well, in a number of different aspects, but what's been, been put in place right now is, is a. What's, what's called Munich Code, which is some agenda software to help make our agendas a little bit easier to do. And it's, it's a transition. It's, it's a new thing. So we're all learning it. But you'll notice the agendas look a little bit different. There'll be hyperlinks on the agenda, so it's easier for people to scroll through the packet, packets and go right to the items that they're most interested in. As the planning commission saw in their email, instead of just attaching the packet to that email, we just gave you a link to the, the Santaquin City website where all the agendas and packets will be available. So hopefully that makes it a little bit easier for everybody to, to access those agendas and packets and know what's going on in, in these meetings.
So is that online for the public as well? Because I've, I've read on Facebook, people complaining they don't have any information. So we can just direct them to the city's website at this point.
Or the, or the Utah Public Notices website where it will be automatically emailed to them with the hyperlinks. That is what the first third of a three-part Unicode upgrade. The first third is the agenda software where we'll roll that out and put it on our website with the hyperlinks. The second third is actually to redo the website. I'm not sure if that'll come next. Or the third third, which is all of our city code is going from Sterling codifiers to Munich code, which will be easier to follow. But with that said, as soon as everything is connected with the camera system in Munich code, you'll be able to actually have our video tied to the agenda so that when you hit the hyperlink to be able to see or go to the part of the meeting that you want, most want to pay attention to, it will not only take you to that part of the minutes, but it'll also, or that part of the agenda, but it will also take you to that part of the video. So.
Technology.
Yep. So a lot of things happening on that front. And we appreciate all the work that, that different staff members have put into this to make our meetings a little bit better and more accessible for everybody.
That's great.
Yeah, very good. Thanks, everyone. Any idea or anything we can discuss about the agenda for our next meeting on the 27th?
So we did have a DRC meeting this morning. The. So. There, there's a couple of things that were discussed that I'm not sure if they'll make it to planning commission or not, but I'm happy to update you on what happened to DRC. There was a couple of final plats in Foothill. Those obviously don't come to, to planning commission, but, but just know that there's, there's more plats being approved and. And growth happening in the Foothill subdivision. There was a concept for the Pedersen property. DRC looked at it and we provided them a, a whole bunch of feedback. It was our recommendation to, to them that they address a lot of those, those. Those red lines so that what they're, they're going to show to the planning commission and what they're going to show to the public in a public hearing is going to be. Most accurate and conform most to our, our, our code. There was a number of things that we weren't quite sure about or, or things that, that look like they weren't going to be in compliance with our code. And so we want to make sure that what they, their proposal is, is going to be as, as accurate as possible for, for that meeting. So. That may or may not be on the next planning commission meeting. It just depends on. The way and, and the, the speed at which they address those comments and, and move them forward. And, and then we had a stop sign request up near Apple Valley Elementary. That obviously doesn't come to planning commission either, but that was something the DRC looked at and, and. We've had a number of those, those types of requests and we're, we're, we're understanding of, of the concerns that are there. And so there's going to be an effort to, to coordinate with Nevo School District and, and, and look at it more in the future when, when there's time for some of the things that have, have been implemented to, to see if they're working or not. Plus, there's a lot of other engineering and, and what are called MUTD standards that, that we go off of to, to give us guidance on whether or not those traffic control devices are worn. Or not.
Jason, I had somebody ask me about that. What's the process if they need to request a stop sign?
So they, they will submit a formal request via email or kind of give us an idea of what they're requesting and why. The DRC members, and remember the DRC is made up of, of the city manager, community development director, myself, police, fire, the building official. Engineer. The, the departments of the city come together and look at these types of requests. The, this process was, is still fairly new, and it was meant to, to look at these. and it was meant to to look at these these uh traffic control requests in a more objective way rather than kind of a political way of of whether or not we feel like it or not. Uh, so like I say, we we uh usually the police will try and put a trailer out there and get traffic counts and and look at speeds and things like that. And we have these engineering standards that that are used and looked at to to give us the the information that we needed to make these decisions. So uh essentially, it stays at the DRC level and and we look at it and you know, if we need time to to research it or or have a trailer out there to gather data, we'll do that. But for the most part, it goes to DRC and 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 we handle those those types of requests.
Okay. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
And then if I could just for a second, go back to the Pedersen request. There has been several emails being sent to city council members, and I'm not sure if the planning commissioners received anything on on the Pedersen Pedersen uh proposal, but what they are proposing is all single-family homes. Um, some are more dense than uh we had anticipated. They're looking to to modify those so that they're in compliance with city code. And uh and there is a significant need for the city to acquire land um in six locations along the East Bench in order to pick up property for debris basins so that when we have debris flow and high water runoff from the mountain ranges, um those uh debris basins will be able to catch that. Now, a hundred percent of the design, the environmental study, and all of the construction is covered by um the federal government under the under NRCS. The only component that's not covered is land acquisition, and there's multiple multimillion dollars worth of land acquisitions that the city would need to do all along the East Bench to protect all of the homes within our community from high water runoff. So that's why it's so serious for us to look at that development and any development along the East Bench to ensure that we're adequately acquiring the land that we need to protect our entire community. And for anyone in our community back when we had the fires, the Molly Fire and and the mud um runoff and everything that took place, that was before my time, but I've been told stories. This is something that's quite critical and essential for our community to be able to to have that go forward. And and kudos to our engineering staff and and assistant city manager for all of the grant work that has been done to lay this in in a project out for us, for our community, which is going to save our community multiple, multiple millions of dollars um with that being covered by the federal government. But there are many questions of of um uh this specific project. And at this point, it's just at the conceptual level. They there's not even approval being considered. And the emails were sent out prior to anyone even looking at that because they came and they presented it, you you know, today. And so the emails came out before that. So I highly recommend if people have concerns about that, that you go back and watch the DRC meeting from today. See what's being proposed, see what the staff is recommending and how it could be modified in order to be more compliant with city code. And then we would be bringing that through its public process uh with the planning commission and the city council as it moves forward. But uh we we ought to, as a community, look at at um at how best to acquire that land so that we don't burden the taxpayers with the acquisition cost of that land. So just just a thought.
The only other thing that was on that that DRC meeting that that will maybe on the next planning commission agenda is is the three, four, one townhomes. Uh, so the planning commission, we would likely be the land use authority for that. The proposal right now is is for for two units. They previously proposed three units, but as we got to the end of the process, uh some survey information was looked at, and it was discovered that the the property line was not where they thought it was. And so with with the actual location of that that property line, they don't have the the adequate room for parking and open space, which made them need to to uh propose one less unit. So uh it was something that they're they'll likely be uh on the next city council meeting for consideration of a deferral agreement. Uh, and so that'll be worked out, and then it'll come to the planning commission, and and hopefully they'll have all the red lines and all the information uh they need to 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 present their proposal to the planning commission for your consideration. So I think that's the gist of of kind of what's what's in the what's in the process and and uh yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about other things happening in the community.
Can I ask one quick question, Trevor?
Yes, please.
So that Nivo Nivo annexation, is there anything you can disclose as far as what the plans are?
There there are no plans at all for that property. It's it's not being annexed because they're they're they have a proposal. It's it's
Just for future use.
Really just annexing the land.
Okay, thank you.
It it's really so we can acquire money for our maintenance of our road, but it was um annexed in as public facilities. So if any development were to come through of any any kind, um first of all, the school district would have, you know, it would be at the bequest of the school district. Um, but then um if it were anything but school or city related, it would need to go through some kind of rezone, which you would all see.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, um commissioners, is anyone aware of any conflicts that would make it so that you could not attend our next meeting?
I will be out of town.
Okay. I plan to be there. And
I plan to be there.
Okay.
I I should be available.
Very good. So we'll we'll plan on Commissioner Sperry being gone, and um hopefully we'll have a few more commissioners that can make it as well. Um, I don't have anything else. Does anyone else have anything else they want to discuss in the meeting?
I I'd like to bring up one thing just to follow up on what Brad uh Gunnel asked at the last meeting that I wasn't able to attend.
Go ahead.
Regarding the Erkenbrack property. I noticed in the minutes that the um rezoning was postponed because the city was considering buying the property. Since the city has not chosen to do that, shouldn't we go ahead and rezone that property?
Well, it's it's a situation where where Mr. Erkenbrack worked with the city uh to to have us have the city consider his property for a couple of civic uses. First, it was a rec center, then it was was a city hall. And so i- in that process, there's a couple of things. One, we want to to try and be careful to not expose the city to to uh make it appear like like the city's taking some action that would would be detrimental to to Mr. Erkenbrack. If you remember when that whole discussion started, uh he came forward with a development agreement in hand that that had had expired, but gave a good outline of of what he wanted to do with the property. And then we kind of went down that route of 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 those different different options. So the city council has has indicated that they would like to to continue working with his Mr. Erkenbrack and put a development agreement in place that was similar to what he had before, which is very much in in line with with the original intent that that sparked that conversation. That is to have commercial uses uh on the frontage of Main Street and residential uses more towards the rear of the property. That is actively being being worked on. Uh, in fact, we met within the day, and and there is a draft development agreement that they have that is being reviewed, and and hopefully that that can kind of get some closure on on the concern there with that property because the way it's zoned right now, it's it's kind of opens up a number of different possibilities, and there's been
I think that was Brad's concern, too.
Okay, and so I I think Mr. Erkenbrack's intention is is very much in line with the C's intention to have commercial on the front and 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 uh
It has been. I was just hoping that was continuing.
Right. And that's what we're trying to memorialize and and find closure on is put something in place to do that. But like I say, because of of that whole process we went through and and there's just a lot of 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 maintaining a a good working relationship with Mr. Erkenbrack, but also making sure that the city's not going to expose themselves to 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 litigation if if there's, you know, if if there's a a drastic decision being made that would change his development rights.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Yeah, thanks for that. I'm I think we're all glad to hear that that's still being actively worked on. So that's good. Okay, well, um, a short one tonight. If there's nothing else, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion. We adjourn at seven forty.
Okay, thank you. We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.